Welcome you and call the order, the May 8th, 2018, Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Do we have any proposed amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mayor, I have one on the consent agenda if we could add item E, and that would be to, Mr. Clausen will not be with us tonight as he is out of town on business to excuse his absence.
Motion in a second to excuse Mr. Clausen.
Further discussion of that amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Any other amendments, additions, subtractions?
I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the agenda is approved this evening. We are to our first citizen comment period for anything that's on the agenda this evening. Am I wishing to address the council? And the princesses in the audience, I see. So, go ahead.
I've got something I'd like to share. Thanks very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Kelsey Hulse. I am your local government affairs representative with Puget Sound Energy, and since it looks like we have some much more exciting things on the agenda, I'll be brief. There's two things I came to talk to you a little bit about. First is that last week PSC announced that they will pass 100% of their corporate tax savings under the Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act onto their customers. It's a total of about $96.5 million. For the average customer, that'll work out along with other rate adjustments to be about a $7 increase per month, and that'll start this month, so just a little bit of good news for folks.
Reduction, you mean?
You said increase. I meant reduction. Oh, great. It's a reduction? It's going down by $7 on the ball tonight. Second, PSC also recently announced their Together Initiative, and that's that page that I passed around to you folks, and that initiative will aim to lower our carbon emissions by 50% by 2040, and will do that by transitioning away from coal power, developing new renewable resources, products, and technologies, and supporting the expansion of transportation, electrification, infrastructure. So we're partnering with our customers to achieve this while still delivering safe, reliable, and affordable power to all. I look forward to coming back to talk with you guys a little bit more about this, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Chelsea? Thanks for coming.
I very much appreciate your time. Decrease, it's going down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Anyone else wishing to address the council for the items on the agenda? We have a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. Items not on the agenda, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion of the consent agenda? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We are to our presentation this evening. We have a number of princesses in the audience, and so who's here to speak to us this evening?
Here I am.
All right.
Good evening, everyone, and here I am again. I'm Helene Jensen, and I'm the royalty director for our brand-new royalty court. Well, they're not actually that brand-new now because it happened on May 8th, March 8th, right? March 8th?
March 8th.
Okay, so time has slipped under my finger, and that is why I have them to keep me straight. So today I brought them to introduce themselves, and so that you have an opportunity to watch them grow and develop as always, and help in the community whenever necessary. So each one will come up and introduce their name, and what their platform was, and grade, name, grade, and what your platform is, okay? All right. I'm gonna start this way.
Hi, you guys come up with Mike. Nope.
Hi, my name is Duchess Veronica. I'm in 7th grade, and my platform was on inspiring girls to be confident and bold.
My name is Ellie Travis. I'm an 8th grader, and my platform was Kitsap County Equine 4H.
Hello, I'm Danielle Wilcox. My platform was on teenage suicide and depression, and I'm in the 8th grade.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Hoyt. I'm a sophomore at South Kitsap, and my platform was on financial stability. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Thompson. I'm in the 8th grade, and my platform was bowling, real-life impact.
Hi, my name is Tamara Metal. I don't know what grade I am in because I'm in college, but my platform was empowerment through the performing arts.
So as you know, we have a lot of fun and exciting things coming up this year, and so the ladies, if I could get two of you to each grab some of these flyers and pass them out to everyone here and as well as the city council, and right behind Tamara are some buttons and pins. We are gonna ask that you look at our buttons and pins and consider to purchase them. It's a dollar for the button, and for the pin, it is $5. So, the girls are gonna come around and see if you wouldn't be interested in supporting their scholarship program. Is there anything else that I should be bringing up, Sharon? Dingey Derby, you guys should build a dingey and be in the dingey derby. Come on, it'd be funny.
I'm pretty sure you'll get us in the parade. Done that the last two years.
Is there anything else you want? No, you shouldn't be. Yeah, that's something totally different.
I have a grandmother of one that I've been already supporting.
All right, so we also have a crew race happening on the Saturday. It's the Saturday, the 26th, and it's a crew race, and we actually have competition this year, I believe, that Bainbridge Island?
Yes, we missed one here, huh?
Bainbridge Island, is that who's doing the crew?
We didn't do that much cleance.
All right, so Windermere is sponsoring the crew this year, and it's gonna be on the 26th, and Bainbridge Island is our competition, so. That's what I was just told. Oh, Olympic Peninsula Rowing Association for Port Townsend. I was not formally briefed, so I apologize. All right, well, thank you so much, and the girls are going around and passing around their buttons and pins, and I look forward to you guys inviting us to your events, and let us make Port Orchard look great once more.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I can make a comment, recently, last Saturday, the South Kitsaps School District had a stuff-the-bus, and several of the princesses were there, and it was greatly appreciated, and with her help, they raised over $3,500, about 3,500 pounds of food.
That is awesome.
So, really appreciate their participation.
That is awesome. You're welcome. And that is exactly the type of thing that our court is good for. We were also up at Ace Hardware doing the free pancake breakfast, so we were all over town. We were at Blooms, the Bloom Festival that happened a couple weeks ago, and what are you showing me?
The Film Festival.
Huh?
The Film Festival.
Oh, the Film Festival, yes. They were also at the Film Festival, so there's so many events, I can't even keep them straight. So, again, thank you very much, and if you have any questions and know how to contact me, you know how to get your hold of me, so, all right. Thank you. We do need to do the photo, if we can have the girls up front so we can do the photo.
Sure. Stand or sit here. Line up there, and maybe if we can, I'm just down.
I know that.
Okay, so Veronica, why don't you switch places with Ellie again? Maria, can you switch places with Kate? Yes.
Which way are you going? Oh, you're talking to us.
Eventually, you don't have to hide behind somebody now. Okay, that looks great. That looks great. Okay. I'm gonna do a couple, one, two, three. I gotta crown right in those chip. One, two, three. Now I'm gonna zoom a little closer. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're to our business items this evening, and the first is adoption of a resolution confirming reappointment to the Kitsap Transit Board. Clerk Reinsen.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, council. So Kitsap Transit Board bylaws state that their 10-member board is comprised of nine elected officials and a non-voting member. The mayor or a member of the council, chosen by the council for Port Orchard, can serve on the board. Mayor Patanzu served on Kitsap Board from 2011 to 2015 as a council member. On December 16th, 2014, council reappointed him as a representative to the Kitsap Transit Board. In 2016, he was elected to mayor and continued to serve on the board. It was brought to the staff's attention that the council will need to confirm his appointment by resolution to serve on the board. Staff recommends council adopt a resolution confirming or ratifying the mayor's, Patanzu's position on the Kitsap Transit Board in his capacity as mayor of the city of Port Orchard.
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming Mayor Patanzu's reappointment to the Kitsap Transit Board in his capacity as mayor of the city of Port Orchard.
Second. I'll give up some of our meetings if you'd like. All right, so we have a motion in a second to confirm my appointment on the Kitsap Transit Board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, I guess I've been reappointed. So, thank you very much. I actually enjoy serving on that agency's board. So we are on to item 7B, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with BHC Consultants LLC for the McCormick Pump Station 2 rebuild project and document procurement. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, honor of council members. On March 2nd, 2018, the city's Public Works Department published a request for qualifications for the McCormick Sewerage Lift Station 2 rebuild project for ad-ready design with alternative analysis, acquisition support, construction administration management, and permitting. By the March 23rd, 2018 deadline, two statement qualifications were received on March 28th. Upon scoring and ranking of the statement qualifications, the city selected BHC Consultants LLC for the project. On April 9th, 2018, public work staff met with BHC Consultants LLC to discuss, clarify, and develop the project understanding. On May 2nd, 2018, the city received a defined scope of work, budget, and project timeline for the ad-ready design, acquisition support, construction administration, and management and permitting in the amount not to exceed $528,500. Fiscal impact, $400,000 was originally allocated within the Water Sewer Fund 401 for the McCormick Sewerage Lift Stations 1 and 2 rebuild project. With the McCormick Sewerage Lift Station 1 now being completed by others, the effort to design, acquire additional land as needed, provide permitting assistance, and the CACM or Construction Administration Management. For the lift station 2, beyond the funding currently allocated, a budget amendment will be required. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of resolution 018-18, thereby approving contract C03218 with BHC Consultants LLC for the McCormick Sewerage Lift Station Number 2 rebuild project, ad-ready design, acquisition support, CACM, and permitting in the amount not to exceed $528,500, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Councilmember Lou Guerelli?
I move to adopt resolution number 018-18, thereby approving contract number C032-18 with BHC Consultants LLC for the McCormick Sewerage Lift Station Number 2 rebuild project, ad-ready design, acquisition support, CA or CACM, and permitting in the amount not to exceed $528,500, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Second. Second, my councilmember, Charity. Discussion of this item? As we know, that was part of the agreement that we entered into with McCormick Woods Development, McCormick Communities, that we would build this lift station, they will build lift station 1. We will need to do a budget amendment in the future here, and the funds will come from the sewer and water utility, but this is something we planned for in the future. We're just doing it sooner than we anticipated, previously anticipated. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the adoption of a contract with BHC Consultants LLC for the McCormick Pump Station 2 rebuild project and document procurement? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are to 7C, approval of amended change order number 1 to contract number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc. for the Tremont Widening Project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. On April 24th, 2018, the Port Orchard City Council authorized the mayor pro tempore to execute change order number 1 to contract C037-17 with Active Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for the needed existing 16-inch diameter sanitary sewer force main relocation, with the provision that once the actual change order approval process is complete, an amended change order number 1 would be brought back to council for final ratification. Staff recommends the city council authorize the mayor to execute the amended change order with Active Construction in a revised amount not to exceed $242,906.33, and I would like to say that that work was completed last week, the cutover that occurred Thursday night in the wee hours. I didn't receive any phone calls, so it was very successful.
Mr. Deener.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute the amended change order number 1 with Active Construction Incorporated in a revised amount not to exceed $242,906.33.
Second. Councilmember Ashby, so a week ago, or two weeks ago, you approved an up to $250. Now we're bringing back the actual amount, and that's what you're approving tonight is the actual change order, contract amount, so. All right, you'll be voting on approval of amended change order number 1 to contract number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc. for the Tremont Widening Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7D, approval of change order number 2 to contract number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc. for the Tremont Widening Project. Again, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, and this will be a similar action where once the work is complete, we'll bring it back for the amended. So on June 27th, 2017, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract C037-17 with Active Construction for the Tremont Street Widening Project. On April 28th, 2018, change order number 1 was approved for the change in condition associated with the depth of the existing 16-inch diameter sanitary sewer first main located within Tremont Street near South Kitsap Boulevard. As mentioned at that meeting, future change orders associated with the realignment of the Golden Pond and Kaiser Permanente, 4-inch diameter sanitary sewer force mains along Pottery Avenue, change order 2, and the extension of the 8-inch diameter water main along Pottery were anticipated. In order to maintain the overall project schedule, change order number 2 has been brought forth at this time. As mentioned before, the change order approval process between the contractor and the city's CACM team and Department of Transportation, highways, and local programs will not occur in time for this regular meeting and cannot wait for the May 22nd, 2018 regular meeting. Therefore, the city's Public Works Department is once again requesting authorization for the mayor to execute change order number 2 with Active Construction in an amount not to exceed $150,000 at this time. Once the actual change order approval process is complete, a corrected change order number 2 will be brought back to council for final ratification. Additionally, change order number 1, number 2, and number 3 are all within project schedule C, but it is anticipated that the overall project will realize significant cost savings from schedule A at project closeout. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order number 2 with Active Construction in an amount not to exceed $150,000 with a corrected change order number 2 to be brought back forth, to be brought back to council for final ratification.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number 2 with Active Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $150,000 with a corrected change order number 2 to be brought back to the council for final ratification.
Second.
Second, my councilmember, Deener. Questions? Yes.
Mark, can you just talk about the reference you made to change order number 3?
So, change order 1, the 16-inch force main that was too shallow. Change order 2, the 2 4-inch force mains, one coming from what used to be Group Health and then from Golden Pond. The third change order that we've identified is there are two old water mains in Pottery, and they're side by side, and they're, we were extending the water main through our work zone, but again, when we potholed, we determined that our asbsils from 1950 or whatever weren't correct, and we actually had two cast iron water lines running through that stretch, so the last thing we want to do is ignore that being there, and so we're gonna, what the change order 3 will do will give us a brand-new water main from Tremont-Pottery intersection tied into the Tremont water main all the way to May, to the south. That'll be completely out of our work zone, and it hooks into a single pipe that's there. So, again, this is...
What's the timing of that?
We're getting numbers today.
Probably next council meeting.
Next council meeting.
We'll probably be bringing this one back for the final, and then bringing number 3 forward with our estimate with a similar process.
Yeah.
Yep, no, it was new today, pretty much. Still finding things in the ground.
Thank you, Mark.
Other questions? That was a good question because we hadn't talked about it yet. All right, we'd be voting on approval of change order number 2 to contract number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc. for the Tremont Widening Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
And actually, I have a question.
Okay.
Given the current agenda, there's the banner across Bay Street discussion, and then there's the landscape follow-up.
Yeah.
Am I needed for either one of those?
I can handle it.
Mount Vernon Laurel.
Mount Vernon Laurel, remind me of that.
Okay.
It's Mount Vernon Laurel.
Vernon Laurel, dun-dun.
All right, we are to item E, approval of the public participation program for the 2018 zoning code. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. On your counter, I passed out a revised version of the Form-Based Code Public Participation Program. There were a handful of revisions that came out of the Land Use Committee from our meeting yesterday morning. Tonight, we are asking you to adopt this public participation program as it relates to an update of our zoning code, and rather than reading off of the staff report, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on what we're, and what's in this document, and kind of what its purpose is. So the public participation program, we're required to do continuous public outreach as a requirement to the Growth Management Act when we update development regulations. On small updates to regulations, we typically just do the standard public hearing at the Planning Commission. We do a SEPA notice and solicit comments, but we don't always host open houses or other types of meetings. When we do larger efforts such as updating the comprehensive plan or major overhauls of development regulations, sometimes we'll form special committees or use other methods trying to reach out to the public and to various stakeholders. So this proposed update, we wanted to formally adopt a program so that the public knows what to expect in terms of the scope of the project, our outreach methods, and our project schedule. So what we're proposing to do over the next couple of months is to work on revising our zoning code and moving to what's called a Form-Based Zoning Code. And right now, we have what's, you know, what would be considered a conventional zoning code that emphasizes the separation of uses and really takes a one-size-fits-all approach to development. In all of our zones, there's a density that is the overarching determinant for what can and can't be developed. And one of the problems with that, and I want to use the example of a fourplex, when you want to build houses, for instance, in our R12 zone, you're allowed 12 houses per acre. However, not all building types are appropriate at 12 units per acre, and so in the R12 zone, we allow fourplexes, we allow apartments, we allow single-family houses, yet we have a minimum lot size that is basically predetermined. And so, right now, to build a fourplex, you would have to have about a 12,000 or 13,000 square foot lot, when in actuality, a fourplex is very reasonable on about a 7,000 to 8,000 square foot lot if it's well-designed and if the parking is arranged appropriately so that it's not, you know, resulting in a bunch of driveways coming off of a roadway. And so we want to really take an approach where we're going to create development standards that are appropriate to the building that is sought, and then to, in our zoning code, state what building types are allowed in which zone. And so, for instance, if we're gonna change the names of our zones, but for instance, if the R12 zone, which is going to be renamed as an R3 zone, we're going to specifically state that detached houses are allowed, townhomes are allowed, duplexes are allowed, and fourplexes are allowed, and there's some others that are in the draft code, but each one of those building types has a different need in terms of how much land is needed to build that form, and what the setbacks ought to be, and what other standards should be as associated with that building type. And so this is a somewhat different approach that we have now, and one of the reasons that we're looking at this approach is because our existing zoning code is producing primarily two building types as far as new construction, and it's apartments such as what was built at Sedgwick that are about 20 units per acre, and it's large detached houses. We're not getting the diversity in housing types that is envisioned in our comprehensive plan, and we all know that housing affordability is a huge issue, and I think one of the reasons for that is that we have a zoning code that is producing relatively little diversity in housing types, and we have developers who look at the regulations, look at the lot sizes, and they try to maximize their return. We incentivize single-family houses that are very large, and we incentivize 20 units per acre apartment buildings that are three stories. We don't, there's no, the economics of building a fourplex or a duplex or townhomes just don't work based on our zoning standards. So we're looking to remedy that, and we are proposing to use a product that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development created about two years ago. A grant was given to the Teton Valley area of Idaho, and that's just on the western boundary of Yellowstone National Park. There's two cities there as well as the county, and they wrote a unified set of development regulations for all of those areas that is one of these Form-Based Codes, and then they dedicated that code for public use so that other cities could use pieces of it or adopt the whole thing if they chose, and so we're looking at just the zoning standards portion, and we're kind of adapting it for use in Port Orchard, and it's one of the most well-written, easy-to-read things that I've ever seen in the way of development regulations. So, in the public participation plan, we list all of the goals and policies that we're seeking to implement from the comprehensive plan as part of this project, and then we're talking about our approach to the project, and specifically who we're trying to reach and how we are going to reach out to people. And one of the really important things I want you to look at is on pages 6 and 7. Obviously, we are, we want to do an extensive public outreach, but when somebody's zoning is not changing, you know, the changes don't really affect the existing use or the possible use, you know, we're going to do a general public notice such as putting things in the paper, putting things on Facebook, we're gonna do, and Fred Chang talked to me before the meeting and suggested that we, and we were supposed to do this as a result of the Land Use Committee, but we left it out of the revised draft, but we're gonna send out a notice in our utility bills so that people can go to a link and view these documents. And of course, we will be having a series of hearings at the Planning Commission. So that table on page 6 and 7 talks about the existing zones and what they are called, as well as the updated zones and what they will be called, and so, for instance, the R4.5 zone is gonna become the R1 zone, the R8 zone will become the R2 zone, and that's because the numbers are just in order of density as opposed to tying to a specific standard, so we wanted to make sure that the naming was, made as much sense as possible. So, we wanted to make sure that the naming was, did, made as much sense as possible. So, with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I did include a schedule in here and we're proposing hearings at the Planning Commission in July, August, and September. And of course, that'll bring this back to the council hopefully in the fall, which of course is budget season. And so, we will get to it as soon as we can, understanding that the, the budget process has priority over getting this project done. I also wanted to mention that the storage units ordinance that we passed the last meeting will be addressed as part of this whole process and so, we're going to roll that into this, this code update.
Questions for Mr. Bond?
Sure.
Deena?
Nick, I understand that, that a code that's only a couple of years old may not really show its promises yet, just yet, but would it be worthwhile to get ahold of the, the users of this in the Teton Valley area and ask how it's working for them so far and to see if there was any weaknesses that they've observed so far or any strengths that we ought to capitalize on?
Yeah, and I, I think it would be worthwhile to do that. I was just looking that up actually tonight and the first of the cities only adopted this in February of this year. So, it was, the grant was completed in 2015 and so, they've taken a little while to, to get it adopted. And I think the, the version that was online was a draft and they had to then kind of tailor it to their local needs and so, but I do plan on reaching out to, to that city.
Yes, Mr. Chang?
Yesterday in the land use committee, we heard that among the non-governmental organizations that the development director, Nick, had made outreach to were the Kitsap Home Builders Association and I believe also the realtors. I don't see that reflected on page seven in the non-governmental organizations. Was that an oversight?
Not an oversight, but we have a standard notification list that we use through our SEPA process and for regulation, or for updates like this. And so, we send, we, we send notices out to a whole variety of state organizations, stakeholders, you know, the realtors groups, environmental groups, et cetera. So, they do get notified automatically as part of the processes that are, that are listed here.
I have a question. In looking at, on page nine under methods and tools, I see that there's going to be public presentations before the Planning Commission and then there'll be public presentations before the City Council's Land Use Committee. Will there be a public presentation before the council, the full council at work study?
Absolutely, and it's just, we didn't, because of the budget, we didn't want to put a specific date to that yet because it'll be in flux. And if we need a little bit more time with this, I know the interim regulations we passed are good for a year. We're hoping to deal with this, to get this to council in October, but if it takes until December or January-
What my question is, is the Planning Commission's going to see it and the land use is going to see it, not sitting on the land use committee. I would like to be fully vested in what's happening. So, I would appreciate something coming before the work study.
Absolutely.
It will, we're just not, we're uncertain of the timeline.
This doesn't have a timeline with it. It's just who's going to see it, so.
Mr. Deena?
So, the, the audience portion of this, beginning on page seven, lists some interesting parties, including Big Harbor, the Rotary Club, some other NGOs, Futurewise. And I'm just curious about how they are going to participate or how we're going to ask them to participate in this effort.
Well, I, I think that we're going to notify them of the opportunities to participate and it's really up to them to, to come and engage. I think at least the other cities in the county really haven't in the past provided comment on anything that we've done in terms of our regulations and Futurewise hasn't been as active in Kitsap County as in other areas, but we're still certainly going to give them the opportunity to become involved.
Thank you.
And to mention the service clubs, I mean, they're always looking for programs at a service club, so.
Yeah, I may, I may try to get on the agenda for a Rotary presentation or something along those lines.
Other questions? Mr. Cardy?
I move to approve the public participation program for the 2018 zoning code update.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the public participation program for the 2018 zoning code update, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the, the motion is approved. Okay, I just wanted to update you a little bit on the banner and where we're at with that. Before I left town on vacation, I'd made some phone calls to the two prop, as, as you know, the banner, have I briefed all you guys the, I can't remember what happened, what hasn't happened in the last few weeks. So, then we did an assessment on, so we raised the one bracket on the, the brick house building. Kirk Craig graciously let us do that and we reinforced it. And then, we thought we were going to modify, we've had a few different ideas on how we could attach on the other side. And the, the marquee is out of the question. We were going to add a, try to add a piece of steel onto it, but it's, the pole is very rotten on that side, so we don't feel that that's safe at all to do. Monsur has, so we were going to attach to the building next to the market. It's got a parapet wall. When we went to attach to it, we thought, felt that we pulled the parapet wall off if we tried to attach onto that. So, the, the market building is new. He's verbally approved us attaching to the block wall, but the clerk's office monitors the ma, mayor's email and for public records and, which is very appropriate. And she saw my email approval from Monsur, didn't quite feel that cut the mustard. So, the attorney is now involved and we're going to work on a very simple agreement, not multiple pages, to have the building owners give us authorization to attach to their building. And so, I think we've got a solution. Hopefully, their attorneys won't get involved too and we're not at this for months, but I verbally got approval from everybody to, to resolve this and we'll be able to get the banner back up over on Bay Street. Yes?
Did we resolve the height issue?
We have not. We're still working with the state on that overall. This will get us above the height.
Okay.
By attaching at, at the heights, at the places we're talking about. In the meantime, Mark and I've deci, decided that we would, I don't know if you've seen the banners above the parking lot on the Sallyport and, and I'm already getting complaints about that. We call the, the deck there above the police department, there's a railing across there. It's only getting, you're only seeing it from one side, but folks have paid for these banners and paid us a fee to display these banners and we don't have a place to display them. So, we put the, the movie theaters up. They weren't pleased with that location and we've refunded their money. Kathleen Wilson from the Merchants Association reached out. She feels a better location is the fence along Frederick because you could see it from two directions. One's going to be through the fence. I'm fi, I felt that, I think I'm, I just wanted to touch, I'm fine with either location. Does anybody have a, a problem with that over there? So, the 640 Bay Street site going down Frederick, there's a chain link fence and Mark says it's secure enough to put a banner on it.
So, it'd be diagonal?
It'd be diagonal, hanging on the fence. It doesn't, I don't think that's as good a location, but if that's where somebody wants their banner displayed, I guess I really, is, and it is an interim solution. Does anybody really have any objection to that? I just didn't want to start doing it without chatting with you guys about it.
I think it's good to be flexible with them and what they want.
Yeah, give them a choice of the picnic table area or the Frederick fence and see which they like.
Well, we can't put it on the, the vinyl one out front. That's not secure. Only the chain link one going down the hill would be secure enough, sturdy enough to, to secure the banner on. You know, it, it catches a fair amount of wind.
So, we can, is it, is the clerk's office able to ask the owner of the banner if they would prefer it by the police station or down the-
Or, or wanting a refund because-
Or wanting a refund.
Because neither location is satisfactory to them.
Right.
I think those are the three options we're going to offer and, until we have the permanent solution back over Bay Street. And then, additionally, we're working overall, trying to get a, a waiver so that maybe we can put the garland back up. We're not completely convinced that, yeah, the garland can go on the poles, so we're gon, we're reassessing all the poles because they have deteriorated since they were last assessed, so. So, anyway, that's, that's what I know. We, we know we can't put the banner off of the key, you know, and we're working through solutions to solve that problem. So, that's all I got on that. Any more questions on? We do have brand-new garland. I just hope we're able to put it up. All right, so we are on to our last business item. Item 7G, approval of a contract with Kitsap Harbor Tours and the City of Bremerton for the 2018 extended foot ferry service. Clerk Ryanerson?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, the city has partnered with the City of Bremerton, the Port of Bremerton, and Kitsap County to provide additional foot ferry service during the summer over the last few years. This service is to help increase tourism to the area. Adding additional hours to the foot ferry service will provide citizens the opportunity to participate in festivals, farmers' markets, and evening activities. The agencies are seeing value in this service as it's bringing additional tourism dollars. This year, the City of Port Orchard and the City of Bremerton can cover the cost of the extended service. Each entity has provided their preference of days and times of the foot ferry service and they have agreed to the terms and conditions outlined in the agreement being presented before you. Upon the agencies, upon the agencies providing their preferred service days, there was a small shortfall on funding the entire summer as in the past. The agencies have agreed to extend service on Memorial Day weekend and then not again until the last weekend in June. This will allow the ferry to continue service until the traditional Labor Day weekend to September 3rd. Based on the protected ridership, the total estimate cost of services presented will be approximately $19,000. Staff has estimated approximately $7,500 will be received from the riders. City of Bremerton and the City of Port Orchard will contribute $7,500 each, bringing the total estimate revenue of $21,500. And I will add that there is a revised service agreement. We were, we didn't want to hold this up and so, we, we did get Monday the actual date of the Bremerton Beer Festival Garden, which is July 20th. In addition, this did go before Economic Development Committee just to get their, their input and when we circulated the event to Kitsap Transit, Kitsap Harbor Tours, and the City of Bremerton, Kitsap Harbor Tours has agreed to pick up an additional Saturday evening, which is the weekend of the parade, and that's why you don't see it on here. They're going to run that route on their service. So, that's not part of the, the dollar figures as originally discussed in Eckhart.
Kitsap Transit will fund it.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. And that is outlined on the Excel spreadsheet that's been provided to you. That is up to date. And the in-kind partnership from Kitsap Transit and City of Bremerton and the City of Port Orchard, as well as the estimated revenues from the passengers from past years, there's the breakdown of that. So, with that, I can tell you that the fiscal impact, the cost to operate the foot ferry is $172.97 per hour. The invoice dollars will be reduced by the amount of revenue collected from the ferry passengers, which is $2 each way, and the net amount will be billed to the partners. The majority of the city's portion will be paid out of the hotel motel fund of $6,300 and the remainder $700 from the general fund. Staff recommends the council to approve the contract as presented.
Counselor Ashby?
Yes, I move to approve a contract between the City of Port Orchard and the City of Bremerton with Kitsap Harbor Tours, Inc. for an additional summer foot ferry services in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion?
Gurelli?
Yes, Clerk Ryanerson, you actually read $7,500 each, but you meant $7,000. Isn't that right?
I apologize. Yes, $7,500 is the revenue in $7,000 each from each partners.
Okay, just clarifying, that's all.
Yes. And then, the seven thou, I need you to make this clear because I kind of remember the conversation from last year. So, the 7,000, in the amount not to exceed the 7,000 for the city's portion, but the overall contract should not exceed $21,500.
Right. My question or what I want the council to be aware of is the, we know what the expense will be because they, they charge us basically $173 an hour to run the service. What we don't know is the revenue from the passengers and that is truly weather-dependent. And our biggest day is the Sunday of Labor Day weekend. You know, that's, that's a real critical date. So, I have some concerns. I see that we have kind of maybe about $2,000 there, but I just want us aware that-
And this, I believe this last season, we, we fell a little short on the revenue and I think it was between the clerk's budget and my budget, we, we just covered it.
Yeah.
It was, it was less than $1,000, wasn't it, the, the shortfall?
I just want us to be aware of that, that we may have to come back and look at it if, if we don't have as much passenger usage as we expect.
Yes, Mr. Chang?
I know that the Port of Bremerton and the county are not participating this year. Were they asked and they refused or they just didn't want to play?
Both of them declined. Declined to meet early on to determine the schedule as well as to participate.
Other port commissioners is very, very opposed to-
Yeah, I know. They've been really reluctant. I think what's also nice is that Kitsap Transit is funding all Saturdays till midnight or 11:45 throughout the summer, so that helps a lot. We don't have to pick that up this time. It's primarily Sundays.
Right. And just also for the general audience, Kitsap Transit, we're grateful to them, not only do they do Saturdays for their, their own needs or commitments they've made, but they allow us to use their facilities. And that's a large in-kind contribution on their part, is we're running their boats and we're using their docks.
We're just paying for the fuel and the, and the crew.
Yeah.
That's what the $172 represents. Further questions? Hearing none. We're voting on the approval of a contract with Kitsap Harbor Tours, Inc. in the City of Bremerton for the extended 2018 foot ferry service. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to council committee reports. Finance committee, I believe-
He gave a report at the last meeting.
Okay, so they haven't met since then? All right. Economic development, tourism?
And we have not met since, it's next Monday, yes.
Yes, we meet next Monday, the 14th. Utilities, I'm not sure that you-
No, we haven't met since and the next meeting is May 21st at 9:30.
Date on that franchise agreement, we've, I think you'll see that in two weeks between us and Westside. Is that the game plan?
We put it on the work study agenda for next week.
Work study agenda? Okay, so you'll see it next week then? So, we, we'll see a draft of that and I don't think there's anything to concern us. We got a, an opinion, legal opinion on the major issue that we were disagreeing with from MSRC and so, that's resolved and we weren't right, but that's okay. We agreed that they would be, decide that for us and that's why we, we're, we're a member of that organization, so. Sewer advisory?
The next meeting is July 18th, 6:30 p.m. at the sewer plant.
Okay. And land use, they just met.
We just met yesterday morning. We talked about derelict vessels and, and how we can manage that better. We spent an hour, in fact, talking about that and what is occurring in the region.
Getting with you, if he hasn't already, with that draft document to-
You mentioned that that would be coming soon if you're looking at it.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, so Chief Marti was available and, and one of his officers who presented on this issue and, and as ports around Western Washington appear to be tightening up how derelict or abandoned vessels are managed, we're feeling the influx of those vessels and the cost of those. It can be $50,000 to dispose of an abandoned or sunken 40 or 50-foot boat. So, we will be taking some time, the city, to come up with some code, which will probably in large part mirror other jurisdictions and we'll be seeing this at work study. So, it, it's a good thing for us. It'll be a huge cost savings for us and it'll make the, the court process a lot more significant when it finally elevates to that level because today, it doesn't really work very well. And that's just a lesson that people are learning over time. The other thing we talked about was the zoning code update and we talked about that tonight. We talked about, Councilmember Chang had a concern about the displacement of Bay Street shops during development or redevelopment and we talked about the availability of, of funds from the state if they feel that they're being impacted under certain situations. We, I think, have a- We, I think, have a standing agenda item about general parking in the area, and we didn't really have enough time to talk about that. And then one item, stream retyping at Silvis Lane, was taken off the agenda because it had been resolved. Any questions?
Land use?
And our next meeting is June 4th at DCD at 9:30 AM.
Lottie Tex?
No.
Anything to report? Okay. Festival chimes and lights?
Our next meeting is Monday, the 21st, at 3:30 PM here at City Hall.
Okay, and council retreat is coming up next Friday. It's a weekday Friday, so all day long, starting at 9:00 AM, Port of Ararta. And outside agencies, I missed those meetings. Anything to report from, Jake covered transit for me and KRCC. Either one of you have anything significant? I know the route analysis was part of the presentation at Transit. Other than that, I don't think there was anything significant on the agenda.
No, they were talking about the alternative fuel bus that was out, and that was also in the paper.
Yes. The Porchero bus, all-electric bus outside on the street.
And fuel costs have been significantly below budget.
Yep.
And at KRCC, the meeting focused on, again, the county-wide surface transportation funding. We had a brief presentation of all of the projects that were submitted, and I believe they totaled something like $28 million, and there's $9.4 million to be distributed. So, there'll be some decisions made.
All right. To the reporter, the mayor, and I've got a few things. This is a draft. Janine just emailed me and says, "There's a typo somewhere in this," so if you find it, there might be a prize. She's going to, before we put it live on the web, we will correct that typo, but as you can see in this newsletter, we have a heck of a lot going on. So, I just wanted to share that with you. I won't go into each one of the things on there. I went to the scouting fundraiser this morning at the Bremerton Conference Center at 6:30 this morning. It was pretty cool seeing young ladies participating in the ceremony there presenting colors. They raised over $30,000 this morning in a couple of hours, so it was pretty impressive. Do you like to report on our Facebook? I'm just not a social media person myself, but boy, it sure does. We sure do get the word out about stuff. So, most recently, the outreach about Tremont, we reached 25,909 people. That's by far the largest. Recent job postings, 12,900 people. We still not, haven't filled that engineering tech position, but we do have two summer hires hired, and interviewing another one tomorrow. Bay Street, 640 Bay Street, 12,600 people were reached. Community Service Day, 9,000 people. The survey reminder for Bethel and Cedric was 4,600 people. Remind people to participate in that, so. The small cell code, we'll see that next week at the work-study. That's pretty well done. We've been running that through our legal services contract with Lighthouse. We talked about it being about $5,000, and that got us to kind of the bare-bones code, and we just learned today that it's probably about $3,500 more than that, so about $8,500. Between that and the attorney bills related to the sewer and water agreements we've been doing, we've been spending a fair, so we'll probably see a budget amendment here in the next few months for legal services, so just kind of keeping you appraised of that. But I believe that small cell regulation will be done ahead of legislature taking action, and then I believe will be grandfathered in with our regulations because we'll take an action, because it's going to come back again this next session, so. I just wanted, you saw, there was a large piece of paper, Randy can put that up on the screen. This was in the Business Journal. Would anybody, I'm subscribing to the Business Journal, I've been throwing it in Councilmember Ashby's mailbox when I'm done. Does anybody else care to see it from time to time?
I wouldn't either.
Yeah, okay, so I'll kind of alternate throwing it in the mailbox. They come once a week. So, this was just in this last week's Business Journal, and it had it by county, and we had a big influx, as you, from, in Reet, for that Arbor Terrace sale at $38 million, which is the largest commercial real estate transaction in the entire county. So, I thought it was pretty cool seeing Port Orchard in the Business Journal.
Where is number 18?
I believe that is the former Kmart site, the...
Okay.
Bymart, thank you.
Sure, okay.
Yep. And then Tremont Place. Nick?
At... 23.
Yeah, number 23, 1382 Tremont Place. That's a commercial building. Oh, you know what that is?
1382 Southeast Lawn.
The Cedar Heights Professional Building. It's the one next to that, I believe, is which building that is. Nick, I reported to you that we were getting, I think I said in an email before I'd left town, that we were behind on, getting farther behind on permitting, and Nick has recently presented a plan to me that CodePros, which are our contract services, going to hire an additional employee, and that we're going to utilize CodePros at a higher level than we have been. It should be, it might require a budget amendment because we're going to exceed the budget authority, but it should be passed through because we're charging fees for those building permits. So, we should see more, we should be, we are seeing more revenue from that, and so we should have revenue to pay for that.
Are most of those single-family residents?
I would say that 60% to 70% are, but the overlook apartments have been, those inspections can be, you know, four or five hours a day, so that's been taking up a lot of time lately, too.
Is anybody, I just drove by there yesterday, and yeah, you're really seeing those coming up out of the ground, you know, above Tractor Supply there. It's a project, it's a three-story building there. Roofs, I think the roofs are going on, the garages.
Have some great views.
Yeah, they are.
Oh, they are.
So, and Mark and I were having a conversation with, we're going to tweak that job description a third time for the engineering tech, and we're going to look at a similar model here and see if we can find an engineering firm that maybe we do some, you know, fee-based contract service, because we've just got to get Mark and Mike Pleasance, our assistant engineer, you know, some help getting, not only are they managing all these projects, we don't want, you know, contract inspectors there, but it's the permit activity. Not only does Nick do a building permit, there's sewer and water and stormwater and streets, and those plans to be reviewed. So, those, we're looking for solutions so that we don't, you know, so we're timely in turning those permits around. Tremont Landscaping, that was the mountain Vernon Laurel. So, that, so Mark, and so what, that is what, so there are, there's maple trees down the center of the meeting at Tremont, and then the ground cover is this mountain Vernon Laurel. So, it'll be a dense ground cover that, once it's established, we shouldn't have weed problems, provided we stay on top of it early after it's been constructed. So, that's what's in the landscape plan, but I know Mark and I have been having some conversations, making sure that we build, what's built there is, you know, easily maintained, and, you know, that's going to be part of the budget discussions, too, you know, as we go forward, this next biennial budget, too, is we're going to, we're going to need to put some resources to maintaining these, some of these beautiful things that we're building, like McCormick Village Park and this gateway project at Tremont. So, I just, Mark had a picture, and...
And related to that, I don't know if you heard this because you were out of town when we had the meeting, but the contractor's responsible for maintain, or for survivability of these plants for the first two years. So, I don't know how much our responsibility will be...
But he's not responsible for the weeds that grow in between them.
No.
Well, if they put their sign there, maybe they'll take better care of it.
Well, they don't, once it's planted, it's ours. You know, and that's, and we're going to need to determine how we maintain that. Is it additional resources in public works, or is it in expanding the, you know, a contract with, you know, a landscape maintenance company? So, but more to come on that. I just, we just wanted to share with you what it is in the plan, and I think it's going to look very nice.
We have a sprinkler system in there.
Yes. Yes, that has irrigation. There's, I believe, there's grass by the sidewalk strips. There won't be grass in the middle, it'll be that.
Right.
Let's see, the PSRC annual meeting, is anybody else going to attend that? Beck and I. Others, May 31st. It's in Seattle somewhere, I can't remember. It's been a whirlwind the last day or two.
I think you did.
But love to see more of you guys, if you wanted to attend. It's about a two-hour meeting over in Seattle on the 31st, so contact the clerk's office if you'd like to attend, and we'll get you registered. Once again, the AWC conference in Yakima, June 26th to the 29th. And we need a head count. Next is McCormick Village Park, four of you have RSVP'd?
I did an RSVP.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking the question. I need to make sure I have enough hard hats and vests. Who has their hard hat and vest?
I have a vest.
I have a vest.
Just your vest, not your hard hat, so three of...
I have vest.
You have your vest, the four of you, okay. Not every, some people turned them in, some people kept them.
I'm a new guy.
You're a new guy? Okay, so Fred, you won't be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're going to have to make his pink, the new guy, just so he stands out.
It's the pink one? Okay, all right. So, I'm going to count John in and say we have six. Our new judge, actually, is, was a planning commissioner for 15 years, and he's actually going to come out and participate with us, too, so. There's opportunity zones, as in the newsletter, I won't talk about that anymore, but I still am excited that we got the one competitive process. And if you didn't catch it, Kitsap County, the county as a whole is considering the ban on plastic bags.
I saw that.
Commissioner Garrido and I have talked. I'm hopeful, I'd like to probably get public notice out on this quickly. We've been talking about May 29th, there's five Tuesdays in this month. Hopefully, everybody wasn't planning on taking off on vacation that week, but if we did a town hall meeting that night, I'd like to include the county in that, since they're considering it. And I think the county's done a lot of legwork on this, too. So, if I can give, I left Commissioner Garrido a voicemail to maybe get that staff member or at least get that information that, from their public meeting that they did. So, are we still wanting to do that on the 29th? Do you think that's a good idea?
Town hall meeting for...
Yes.
This makes sense that we don't fragment that issue.
Okay, so, and I think it'd be more powerful if we participated with the county in that. So, okay, that's all I have. We'll make that happen. Let's see here, department heads. Mr. Dorsey's left us, Mr. Bond?
You stole my only announcement about the small cell issue, so nothing, sorry.
Nothing for me tonight either, thank you.
Clerk Ryanerson?
I have two items. One, I think I heard you guys mentioned that you're interested in participating in the Fathoms of Fun Parade this year. Is that correct?
I threw it out there just a moment ago.
Okay, so I guess I'm asking...
Desire, we've done it the last two years. What do we want? Well, I guess, let's talk about it at the work-study, what we want to do for an entry versus...
It's just time to start filling out the form, so...
So, we'll fill the form out, and we'll figure out what we're going to do for an entry.
Okay. And then Helene had mentioned earlier about the city council doing a dinghy derby, being participating, so I just want to let you know that she did officially send an email to the city, to me and to the Port of Bremerton, asking if you guys wanted to challenge each other in the dinghy derby. So, I'm just putting that out there, and if there's interest, I'm assuming you know how to get ahold of me to have me initiate that.
Can we use some of those derelict boats, maybe?
Good idea.
I'm not going to comment on that.
You go ahead.
And that's all I have.
That's all you have? All right. Okay. We are to our second citizen comment period. Anybody wishing to address the council this evening? You have three minutes, so please identify yourself for the record.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name's Chris Kim. I apologize for having to push the rewind button here tonight. I normally work Mondays, so I'm on vacation, so this is my first opportunity to come and ask you to please reconsider some ordinance that was presented at the land use committee regarding a retail ban of the sale of puppies and kittens. As you already know, most of these animals come from intensive breeding facilities that are commonly referred to as puppy mills, and I'm not going to waste your time sharing stories about the horrible conditions these animals are raised in, in puppy mills. It's, you pretty much have to be a flat-earther to believe that any animal raised in an intensive breeding facility is being cared for in anything but the most deplorable conditions. This ordinance that was presented to you is not aimed at these facilities, however. Those are difficult to regulate, they're difficult to police. This ordinance aims, is directed at the demand side of the equation, because these facilities exist because of pet stores and other brokers that buy these animals from these puppy mills. So, what we're trying to do is disrupt the trafficking in cruelty from the demand side of the equation by not allowing them to be sold in retail stores here in Port Orchard. It's not complicated, it doesn't require inspections from trained enforcement officials, it just says that we will not allow businesses to profit from misery and cruelty here in Port Orchard. The best part of this is that these businesses don't currently exist in Port Orchard, so this is literally, there's literally no downside to this for you to do. It's an easy-to-approved ounce of prevention. It leads to a great Facebook post. If you're on Facebook, it says, "Tonight, we said no to cruelty in Port Orchard." Now, I understand that the fact that there is no business currently selling puppies and kittens from puppy mills may have led you to think that, you know, this legislation isn't needed. I totally understand that we don't need unnecessary legislation. The problem is that right now, you're behind the curve, because the cities of Bainbridge Island, Palsbo, and Bremerton have already adopted ordinance similar to these. So, that means that if someone sees an opportunity to sell animals in a puppy store here in Port Orchard, your lack of action has essentially opened a big welcome mat to these people. So, if that happens, the outrage from the animal welfare community will be swift and fierce, especially if they know that it could have been prevented before. And I'm not saying that as a threat, I'm saying that as a fan of Port Orchard who loves doing business. I buy my horse feed at Tractor Supply, I love the orange cranberry scone at Whiskey Gulch, I love those crispy tater tots at The Brick. I love Port Orchard, and I don't want any other businesses to be pilloried by association because we didn't take action on this issue. This is literally the easiest ordinance that you could adopt all year long. It's an easy opportunity to be on the right side of right, it's an easy opportunity to be leaders you were elected to be, and I urge you to please reconsider this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment this evening? Please state your name for the record. Three minutes.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council member. I'm Robert B. Gilbert. Just want to say that I supported ordinance banning the sale of, the retail sale of puppies and kittens. Also, just like, just like the person before me spoke and said, as you know, the puppy mills are actually horrible, and you know that, I just want to let everybody know about puppy mill and pet store connection, and the only way to rid the misery of these puppies and kittens is to get rid of the retail sale of puppies and kittens. When people stop buying these puppies and kittens in the stores, we'll no longer have to have puppy mills. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment this evening?
Mayor, council members, my name is Patrick Perry, resident of Port Orchard. I wanted to say to you guys that I'm a Gulf War vet, wartime vet. I do have a service dog. I didn't want to bring him tonight to, basically to, I don't know, I just didn't want to bring him in here tonight. But anyway, I started out first, I had a Labrador. It came from a puppy mill. I didn't know it did. Somebody gave him to me, and it was very hard to take care of, even with training with the people at the, training people, excuse me, I can't really, it's hard for me to talk. It was really hard to train him, even with professional trainers, so I had to get rid of him. I did end up getting a dog from Kitsap Humane Society, and with help of trainers, I was able to train him to be my service dog. So, what I'm trying to say is, basically, we don't need puppy mills in this area for us, like veterans like myself, to get dogs that are good and that will help us through our things that we go through. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment?
Hi, I'm Forbes Duncan. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very nervous, but the reason why I'm here tonight is to speak, hope to pass an ordinance to ban the sale of puppy and cat mills in stores. In the past three months, I've sat and listened to your trying to pass, to do projects and moving money around to pay for the projects. You can do something now that will not cost anything to the community by passing an ordinance to ban sale of puppy and cat mills in the stores. With the situation recently happening in Port Orchard with a person shooting their own dog, who had died later of the gunshot wounds in the stomach, you have, probably will have a lot of state and national attention from this awful situation. You, as a board, have a great opportunity now to do something positive for the community, for the voiceless animals, and show everyone, we, we still have humanity left. Now is a perfect time to do this and to be proud to pass an ordinance to ban the sale of puppy mills and cat mills in stores. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Bob Wilson. I've been a resident of Kitsap County for over 40 years. And although I'm not a citizen of Port Orchard City, I do frequent Port Orchard quite often for shopping and essentially all of my personal affairs. I came to speak to you in favor of an ordinance to control the sale of animals from puppy mills. I have personally, I've had animals all my life, and I've had experience with animals that I did not and was not able to find out the medical history of their physical condition other than what a vet was able to tell me on the day of the, an examination, which was valuable, but it did not give me any information regarding the genealogical kinds of problems that arise with, with animals. And everything that I know of about puppy mills indicates to me that the animals that come out of there can have an ascending number of diseases that I really don't think the general public ought to be foisted with. When I, when I get an animal, it's because it's something that I intend to love and cherish for its entire lifetime. Losing an animal is a very hard thing to do, especially when they've been part of your life for 15 or 16 years. I went through such an experience about a year ago with a Doberman that I, I had that had heart problems. She experienced grandma seizure, which essentially is like a epileptic fit, and it's not a pretty thing to not be able to do anything about. I think the prevention of puppy mill animals in the city of Port Orchard would be beneficial to the entire population of Port Orchard as well as Kitsap County. I would like to see a county ordinance at this level, but I understand there's other extenuating circumstances that make that a little more difficult. So I would encourage you to consider adopting an ordinance that would provide some positive and measurable controls over the animals that get sold as pets in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment?
Hi, my name is Jay Sager. I am a resident of Port Orchard. Mayor, council, I support this ordinance as well. I've unfortunately dealt with animals that have come from puppy mills. It's a sad thing. That's really all I have. Anything else would be just redundant. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jerry, you've been waiting patiently.
Excuse me. I wanted to talk about the public participation program on the zoning code. You've had articles on the front page of the local paper, and I think that this would be an opportune time to at least get it on the front page, because I'm very upset that when you say is put in public notices, that's like three pages of fine print that people have to go through, a lot of death-type, you know, people putting their public notices in, and then somewhere in between all of that, there's this little blurb from the city. Anyway, I would hope that you would put that where more of the citizens, it amazes me that our government seems to think that the Home Builders Association, the Realtors, and such always need firsthand knowledge of all of this, but the actual citizens that are paying the taxes on this, there, it's a guessing game as to when they hear information about upcoming hearings and things like that. But they're always notified that this is going to be, you know, personally given to their organizations. So that's something that I would sure like to see a different way of getting it out to the general public and not just the real estate people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do my best to get it in the newspaper, but I don't control what goes on the front page. All right. Others wishing to comment?
Good evening. I'm Eric Stevens. I'm the Executive Director of the Kitsap Humane Society, and I wanted to add my testimony to why the Humane Society would be, is in favor of an ordinance that would ban the retail sales of animals. There were some eloquent comments made tonight, so rather than reiterate those comments, I'd like to add a few other perspectives. One thing is that we have seen over decades, and even in the last five or six years, a real sea change in public opinion about the care and treatment of animals. There was a time when animals in our country were really thought of more as possessions and commodities, but today, citizens don't, wouldn't stand for it. Part of that sea change is expecting different standards from animal welfare organizations. There was a time, even just 20 years ago, in this county, Kitsap Humane Society, like most public shelters in the United States, had euthanasia rates that were well in excess of 50%. Going back to about 1991 year, there were something like 8,500 animals that were brought into our shelter locally from, from various municipalities in Kitsap County, and 5,500 of those animals were euthanized. You know, today, if, if we were operating like that, you know, we'd be driven out of the county. And so I think the importance of understanding this, this, or the need for this ordinance is that people today are, are expecting something, you know, very different. We adopted out thousands of animals last year. I mean, our business really is rescuing animals and saving their lives, because they come to us often from very poor conditions and having been mistreated. We adopted out thousands of animals, which is a good thing. Yeah, we charge an adoption fee. Our average adoption fee is something like $118. It costs us about $400 to care for and adopt out every animal that we adopt out. So we're not looking for more business or to put anyone out of business. We're not against breeders. We're for responsible breeding. And in Kitsap County, you can be a breeder. You can be licensed, you can be inspected. So we don't wanna put breeders out of business, because we understand that people, some people wanna get pets from breeders. But we want that to, we want the citizen who is purchasing an animal from a commercial facility to know where that animal came from. And that's why I think it's important to have a ban. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the citizen comment period in the good of the order. There are two young ladies in, in the far-left corner of the room, if you could stand for me. They are Olympic College students here observing our council meeting this evening. They're part of, they're civics class, and one of their requirements for their class was to be here and observe a council meeting. They made me sign the agenda as proof that they were there, and I actually gave them a lapel pin for joining us here tonight. So thank you for coming tonight. All right, with that, our meeting's adjourned. Mr. Dina, does something else for good of the order?
Yeah, I was just wondering if we got any feedback on the film festival, and how it was received.
I wasn't in town, so.
I went to the Second Annual Port Orchard Film Festival. It was well-attended, but there is a lot of room for growth. I actually wish they had better outreach, similar to what we're running against. It, they had good feedback and support from all the merchants, and they had room for more public to show. I got the three-day pass, so of course I went to every, something every day, and they were interesting. Some were really interesting, and some I really enjoyed, but it was, it was a fun experience, and I would recommend. They're also doing it next year, which is very exciting. I think it's something that is helping to put us on the map.
Wonderful. Thanks for that. Anything else for the good of the order?